Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mrs. Carling?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Markson?
Okay, my Mr. Markson's absence is very ridiculous, he is not here, which is why you guys have stopped meeting for the evening in terms of meeting. So, we have a pretty brief agenda, but some important stuff.
It's probably, you know, a new guy wasn't even using the microphone. Anyway, we have a pretty brief agenda and we'll make sure that we get into the details of it. So with no further ado, I think our first business is President's Report. And I don't have a President's Report, but I have a few comments that I want to make very briefly before we get into the bulk of our agenda. Over the past couple of weeks, I've received some emails from some citizens about our finances, about our budget, about our plans for spending and some of the cycles that relate to that. So I first want to commend them for reaching out and at least making their questions or concerns known. That's incredibly important because what we're trying to do is constantly keep the community informed of what we're doing. Our finances are very cyclical at times and oftentimes kind of mundane if you think about what we do and when we approve them. But there's a few things that have popped up that makes it noteworthy. I mean, people are concerned about what they see and read with Chicago Public Schools and the funding related to what's going on downtown. And then they're also concerned about what we do here. I mean, we're very fortunate to be in a position that we don't have some of the challenges that the Chicago Public School System has, but nonetheless, it's our job as board members to try to be as diligent as possible in terms of keeping people informed. So one of the things that I wanted to point out is one of our objectives is to constantly focus on all our kids, right? And that's a statement that we had the luxury to make within District 115 because thanks to the board members that have preceded many of us at the table here and the staff that diligently manages this on a regular basis, we're in good shape. So when you're in good shape, you can talk about the kids, right? When you aren't in good shape, you can't really talk about the kids anymore and you lose control of the messaging because now it's about the money. And it's really important that people who have questions in the community get answers. And there's multiple ways of doing that. We've received over 40 FOIA requests over the last two years for information. Please continue to submit FOIA requests if that's what you think's going to answer your questions. I have a suspicion that that isn't the case because oftentimes you get data dumped with a lot of information that requires even more explanation. Now, trust is a huge part of this. If you don't trust me as an individual or you don't trust certain board members to give you the information that you think's important for you to make an informed decision, then you feel as though you're kind of on your own. And the only thing that I would want to point out is, you know, we get further into the year and we have more spirited debates about what we're doing, is realize that there's multiple folks you can reach out to. In order to get information, you do not have to file an actual FOIA. You can make a phone call, you can meet with our finance people, you can call the superintendent, you can identify a board member that you may trust more than another. I realize within the community, depending how we may have voted in the past, some people feel as though some of us are more trustworthy than others. That's fine. But our goal and objective is to make sure that we're getting, you know, noteworthy fact-based information to people because we have no secrets. A member of the community made a comment to me a couple of weeks ago, "Oh, there are so many secrets at District 115." I got to tell you, I mean, I haven't seen any secrets. I've been doing this for three years. I'm not smart enough to keep secrets from anybody. And it's incredibly important that if you feel as though you're not getting the full story, that you look for alternative ways to try to get those answers. We try to spend for generational reasons. I'll give you an example. We spent a considerable amount of money last year with our Leading Edge Initiative. Our goal and objective as a board was to make sure that our kids had the best technology available to them, so we made sure that every student in our school has a laptop computer or a notebook computer. That's changed the way they do their homework, that's changed the way they interact in class, that's changed the way our teachers teach. Some subjects are more conducive to that than others, but we made a very conscious investment that that was going to be important to best prepare our kids. We've talked recently about a new welcome center to our school, which is largely anchored to some safety concerns that we have. It is a lot of money. I mean, when you're considering spending more than a million dollars, that's important for people to realize what we're doing and why we're doing it and whether or not it's the best use of those funds. Those are fair game questions, keep them coming, but know that other than just trying to FOIA a budget, and let me tell you, the budget that we have to submit to the state is not even readable. I mean, there's so many nuances associated with it, it's going to be very difficult to navigate through, and I don't want you to get frustrated with it like I have over the years and use that as a translation that we're hiding something from you. Because there, again, there's nothing we are trying to hide, and if you don't think you're getting straight answers, then keep after us to make sure you get that. Okay? So with that being said, I think we'll move on to Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic.
And our students are going to start us off with the secrets of Lake Forest High School over there and also Dr. Holland. Thank you.
So unfortunately Jill cannot be here, and in her place we have Nicolette Stern, who's our senior class student council president. She's done an awesome job this year, so I'll just jump right in. So earlier in, or late December, we did our door decorating contest, which we do annually, and it's, I'll give you a brief kind of run-through of what that was again. But each teacher chooses a class of theirs to decorate their door for a holiday theme, and if they're not able to do that, then student council will step in. So it's kind of a fun way to bring kind of the community between the faculty and the students together and kind of a fun holiday contest. So basically, we had 15 doors decorated and then five others that student council helped decorate as well. So it was a very good success.
Along with the door decorating, in December, we had a holiday spirit week, and it was from ugly sweaters or wearing your holiday spirit colors, and everyone dressed up from freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And it was just a huge, huge success because spirit is such a big thing at our school. So it was a good way to start off the holiday.
So kind of like the kickoff cookout, we had a calm before the final storm. So just before finals, we wanted to make sure that we had, you know, we really packed the stands for the basketball games, JV and varsity. So we decided to hold kind of a, you know, cookout in the cafeteria. So we had catered food from Fat Man Bowl, which was burgers, hot dogs, salad, and then we also had Suzie Swirls, bring ice cream, so a kind of little fun treat. Jay West, a student at LFHS who's DJ'd dances before, DJ'd that. That was awesome. Lot of kids dancing and over 200 students attended as well as staff members. And the stands were packed, like I said. They were filled for both the JV and the varsity games. And then after that, we had finals, so that's why we couldn't be there last week because Jill and I had to study. But finals went very well. A lot of kids benefited from the new schedule that was implemented, I believe, last year. Because a two-hour final seems very long, and to sit through that, it kind of feels like, you know, there's just a lot of stuff that's being kind of repetitive with it. So cutting it down to 90 minutes definitely benefited the students a lot, more efficient and again, better received. Correa and other youth groups attended in-between tests, so in the commons, and they had, you know, games and food, just kind of a stress-free environment. And we also really loved the puppies that the APT brought in. Lot of kids loved that and, you know, all smiles.
We just recently had our Turnabout Dance, and we sold over 900 tickets. So that was a really big show out, which was awesome. And we had the same DJ from Homecoming, and he was a huge hit again. He had confetti shooting everywhere and requesting songs, and it was just a really great environment. And then the senior class student council put in a senior lounge in the lower commons. So it was like a roped-off area with a special photo booth and special food for just seniors to like make them feel special. So that was really fun, and I know we really enjoyed that. And then we also had Suzie Swirls catered there too, so the high school loves Suzie's.
So with the dance money from Homecoming and Turnabout, we were kind of thinking of ways that we could give back with that. And so with some of the money that we raised from the dances, we reached out to a school in Flint, Michigan because of their water crisis to offer our assistance. Mrs. Harmson will be in touch with the school this week, so we'll give you updates on that at the following meeting. And then we're also reaching out to the superintendent of North Chicago to provide packed backpacks with school supplies for next year's students in need. So again, with the money that we raised for the dances, we're looking to kind of give back to the surrounding communities.
And then lastly, tomorrow, we have our E-Day or Skilled Scout Day, and it's just a really nice break because February doesn't have a very long break or spring break or anything like that. So it's a nice break from the month of February, and there's definitely like over 50 sessions, maybe I would say, that you can attend and you sign up for. There's food, dancing, whatever you want to do, whatever your interests are, you can attend. And then we have music and a bouncy house in the commons and a fun dance pianist in the RMA. So it's really just a fun day. Do you have shortened classes? So we'll let you know in the next meeting how that goes, but it always goes well, so I'm sure it'll be a great hit.
And that's all. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, now that they're leaving me. So just to pick up on some of the things that Jake and Nicolette mentioned, we revised our exam schedule based on some of the revisions that took place last year and the feedback. We made some changes for this year, minor changes, but it was all based on feedback. Right now, since we are done with exams, we are also soliciting feedback from our students. Students received an email asking them to respond to a very short survey, just because we want to make sure that our changes are having the impact that we hoped, and we want to hear directly from them. Additionally, we are collecting feedback from our faculty as well. Connected with E-Day or Chill Scout, Chill Out Scout, however we want to frame it, Day, we're excited about that tomorrow. It is an attendance day for students, and we are excited about all of the people that are coming in to provide support, services, and an awesome experience for our students, as well as our faculty and staff, who are also running a lot of cool sessions. The district has a commitment to emotional wellness, and whether it's through our New School Day, how we greet and take care of our kids daily, or the special activities we plan, we are really focused on maintaining our academic excellence while also providing balance for students to explore other aspects of who they are. And so the social-emotional well-being of our students directly connects with everything we mention around academic success. And so we are really excited about the day, really appreciative for our collaboration with APT to make these type of experiences possible. Also underway, right now, we have course enrollments going on and registration, and so our students are currently in the process of selecting their classes. With our New School Day in mind, we are encouraging students to explore our course catalog, to find out other opportunities to take advantage of and/or to continue on in a sequence of a trajectory of interest. We're offering some new courses next year, and all of this information's posted on our website, and so we're really encouraging students to actively engage and be at the forefront of choosing those classes. Summer school. So summer school registration, we plan on opening that up this month. We'll continue, please continue to check the website for additional information. But as a district, we've spoken about and really have been committed to removing obstacles for our students as they prepare for their next level of rigor, challenge academically. And so to support our students, as they are ready, we have expanded our summer enrichment offerings this summer to include additional bridge courses across a variety of content areas. So bridge courses are enrichment courses that are designed to equip students with the knowledge, skills, and resources needed to successfully reach their academic goals. So if a student needs to further develop or refine a prerequisite skill for success in a class that they're going to have in the fall, our summer bridge courses are an awesome way to do this over the summer and without some of the stress and pressures related to carrying a full load. And so as we've outlined in our strategic plan, we want to make sure that we're providing supports for kids in a non-stressful way to be as successful as possible with the experiences they have in the fall. Our counseling department is awesome about creating a variety of different workshops and seminars for our families, and there's one coming up. On February 11th, they are having a free application for federal student aid, a FASSA workshop. And so we're encouraging seniors and their parents to take part in that workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holland. And I've got a couple of other things to share for the Superintendent's Report. First is that there is another bill that our board and community may want to pay attention to that is known as SB 1. It's the current legislative session. SB 1 is the first bill introduced. It is a reprise of last year's SB 16, which was a bill related to school funding. And for Lake Forest, it roughly will equate to something along the lines of a Robin Hood bill to take from some and give to others, which was the premise of SB 16 last year. So SB 1 is a shell of a bill at this point, but it is, and it has yet to be clear what may wind up filling that shell, but something to pay attention to closely. ESSA, the successor act of what we know as No Child Left Behind, has been approved by both chambers, the Congress and the Senate have approved that, and the President has signed it. It's now in a really important phase, which is the writing of the rules. After an act is passed, the next phase is for the administration to begin to write how this is to be enacted, and that's known as the rules. Those rules can really make a big difference. That's why our participation with the National School Board Association is so important because they inform the lawmakers about those rules. Third thing I want to talk about was an ongoing conversation that I hear in our community related to college applications and how our students are doing in their college searches and to their institutions. One school, their enrollment is actually declining, and so they're much more actively pursuing students than they ever were before. Another really big opportunity that often goes overlooked are state honors colleges. These are incredible deals. If you went to a large school, you will probably know what it means to be able to schedule first as opposed to schedule with the freshmen. A lot of students in large universities really don't get the course schedule that they want until they're a junior or a senior because they scheduled last or almost last. These honors colleges also have capped class sizes, usually somewhere between 20 and 25. They frequently have special living arrangements, so a special dorm that the kids get to live in. And these honors colleges turn very large universities. This is virtually every state college across the nation, whether that is in, whether that's the Ole Miss, or whether that is Grand Valley in Michigan, or whether that is Miami where so many of our kids go. It turns a very large university with a large school student life into a very small school experience for kids. The students in those honors colleges also have a lot of assistance for future placement and internships because of the small atmosphere. They also have very disproportionate rates of success at very highly desirable post-baccalaureate placement. Why? Because they got special treatment all the way through. There's an article that is worth looking at, it's from U.S. News and World Report. It's called "Public Colleges' Honors Programs Give Students the VIP Treatments," and it goes through and it talks about how many students planned on going to East Coast green-leafy schools and were courted by the public, the state college went to those places. They talk about Indiana University's Hutton Honors College and the incredible experiences that they have there. They're really significant opportunities for our students across the board. Not for every student, obviously, but there is a really amazing environment that exists in the honors colleges. And for students that are looking to be a big fish in a small pond, these are real opportunities for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. It's now time for public participation, so if we had anybody from the public that wishes to address the board, I'd ask that you please step to the microphone, give your name and address. Going once, going twice, going. All right. So from a report standpoint, Mrs. Carling, would you mind giving a quick update on communications and some of the work that I know that you've been doing there, just in terms of kind of staying connected for us?
I would love to. Sally Davis and Ann Whipple and I have been meeting because as a Board of Ed, we are looking at the different ways we can listen to our community and stakeholders and communicate back to them what we are accomplishing, what we are evaluating, and what we are planning for the future. One of our first steps has been community listening. In January, we had attended the APT, which is the Association of Parents and Teachers Meeting. We attended the Boosters Meeting, which would be the Athletic Parent Group, and Applause, which is theater?
Music.
Music, sorry. I did not go to that one. Obviously Sally went to that one. These were great opportunities to hear what the community concerns were, and we will continue to do so going forward at other various community forums. We also included a Board of Education report in the most recent Insights newsletter that was received in your mailboxes in January, which features highlights of all sorts of wonderful District 115 and District 67 events. Second, we are analyzing different communication strategies, including this wonderful degree of stakeholder engagement chart, and looking at the best practices and communication strategies that we can implement. We will continue to work on a formal communication plan for the Board of Ed and hope to be able to present that later this spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on, please, to Board Committees. Dr. Elliott, Education Committee, assuming that you may have met or may not have.
Yeah, we met last Wednesday, February 3rd. We welcomed a new community member, Jeff Giannelli, who is a Lake Forest parent, resident, and business owner. And then we heard from Mr. Rogers, Assistant Superintendent, about assessments and the fact that the state is moving away from ACT and toward, has decided to adopt the SAT as the new statewide assessment. Of course, our students have lots of experience with the ACT, so this will involve a transition for our students, but we heard that the plan is to offer SAT prep courses next year to replace the ACT prep courses this year. And we also learned about the suite of assessments that will track kids from eighth grade through 11th grade so that we can better monitor their progress. And then Superintendent Simic gave us some more background on the pending ECRA contract. ECRA is, if it's approved tonight, will allow us to use this copious assessment data to better track and advise students about academic achievement. It also monitors social-emotional measures, which is, of course, part of our mission, and should help us get better measures of student growth, which is going to be necessary to meet some of the teacher evaluation goals. We will meet again in April.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Finance and Operations Committee, I'll go ahead and take that one. I think in the last board meeting, we had met that morning, so I gave a brief update, but just a few comments that I want to add. We heard Mr. Simic bring up SB 1, Senate Bill 1. It's something that we continue to monitor and thanks to our finance staff, you know, getting updates continuously as to what we think may or may not happen. There were some articles in the Chicago Tribune last weekend and the weekend before about this bill and what it may or may not do. One of the key elements is, as Mr. Simic pointed out, the idea is to take special ed funding away from wealthier districts to redistribute it to other districts that are really struggling. So when you think about it, kind of very similar to some of my comments at the top of the meeting, when you lose financial control of your district, you can't really properly represent all the kids. And when you think about East St. Louis, or you think about the city of Chicago, or you think of North Chicago, some of those challenges put undue pressure on those individual districts. And what they're trying to do in a very not-so-efficient way, I guess, is redistribute some of those dollars. That dollar amount, as it relates to us as a district, is about $116,000. Clearly, nothing that we would wish to lose, but it has been on the radar, as I pointed out, and we constantly monitor that. We're in a position to be able to manage through it if we had to. It kind of gets to my comments about how we look at our spending, and we typically do it over a five-year period of time so that we're properly managing our fund balance. And so just for those of you in the community that are concerned about it, it's something that we're certainly aware of, and I feel very comfortable at this point. Depending what comes down the pike from Springfield, we'll be able to address that. We've extended our agreement with our auditor, Miller Cooper, who does a great job for us. We received a, our most recent audit update that had nothing noteworthy of concern, which is always a good thing. Jen Hermes gave us an update on our comprehensive food service review. Some of you have heard some rumblings about that, I'm sure. We're taking a look at what can we do better, what can we do differently, how can we maximize the equipment that we have, which continues to get great ratings as state-of-the-art and something that we're possibly underutilizing. We're looking to do a better job at that. And then lastly, Mr. Alvis gave an overview of the five-year financial projections. The last thing I want to say about that, and it relates to some of the community emails, and some of the comments were very poignant in that, you know, when is the spending going to stop? I get and understand that, but please know that the dollars that we're, we like to think we're investing them, but depending on what side of the fence you sit on, sometimes it may feel like just pure spending. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to invest those dollars that we already have. So it doesn't necessarily impact the tax levy that many of you know was anchored in 1991. So what we're privy to is really inflation from the 1991 level that really determines what our new tax levy is. Us deciding to either move forward with our school welcome center project that some of you have read about isn't going to impact your tax rate. Those are dollars we already have in our budget that we're trying to spend appropriately. When or if the board decides that that's an appropriate use of those dollars, which I think is probably more in the April timeframe than anything, you know, we hope to get as much feedback from the community as to what that looks like. But know that- But know that it isn't just us trying to manage spending over one project at a time. We're managing that with capital needs associated with all of our facilities. You don't have to travel very far to encounter school districts that may not have managed that as well as we have. And that, again, is credit to the finance staff and prior boards that have constantly been trying to make sure that our facilities keep up with what the needs of our community expects and our ability to educate our kids in a safe, healthy, happy, and effective way, which is ultimately the goal of all of us. And so that's it from a finance standpoint. Okay, let's move on to liaison reports. Any updates from a liaison perspective?
Yes, from NSSED, which Northern Suburban Special Education District. We last met January 20th in the, on the campus in Highland Park. We reviewed our financial audit, and like 115, we had a clean audit with, and the only major change was the adoption of GASB 68, which requires a new standard for pension liability disclosures, which we are now in compliance with. Secondly, we reviewed our enrollment. Enrollment is down slightly from last year, and as a result, we also, it looks like it is starting to pick up as we approach the year end, but we have held off filling two FTE positions. By doing so, we are keeping expenses in line with our income. Finally, and I know Mr. Simic's always happy to hear, we did approve the hiring of a new superintendent, and we hired Dr. Kurt Schneider as the new superintendent of NSSED. He will start effective July 1st, 2016. He's currently Assistant Superintendent of Learning at School District 181 in Hinsdale. And he also serves as an adjunct professor at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, teaching courses within the educational leadership and policy analysis and rehabilitation psychology department. So as one member of the 18-member consortium, we'd like to welcome him on board. The next Leadership Council meeting will be 7:00 PM, February 17th, in Highland Park at the NSSED campus.
Thank you.
I need to do EdRed, if I could also.
Yes, please.
So Mr. Markison had asked that I start functioning as the liaison to EdRed. I've done it all in one meeting now, so I won't belabor it. But just to echo Mr. Powers' conversations and Mr. Simic's comments, like realtors tell you, there's only location, location, location. If you are thinking about what matters right now legislatively in Illinois, it is school funding, school funding, school funding. And so the only thing I'm going to add, because I think you guys have already covered the important points, is that today, House Speaker Mike Madigan has announced that beginning of February 16th, the House is going to be holding a bipartisan education funding task force, a series of hearings throughout the spring, which is probably going to be long and painful, but probably not a bad place to keep our finger on the pulse of what is evolving. So to the extent that we are able to share with our constituents and our community more information about that, we'll seek ways to do that, as we had talked about in the joint board workshop in January. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry for cutting you off. Okay, let's move on to action items. We have four action items before the board this evening. The first is approval of the ECRa contract and the amount of $33,000 for fiscal year 16 and $36,900 for fiscal year 17. Mr. Simic, would you like me to turn this over to you or Dr. Holland, who?
Yep, I will take from here. Thank you, Mr. Powers. I may ask Dr. Holland as a future user of ECRa, Dr. Wilcox as a former user of ECRa, and Mr. Rogers as a current user of ECRa to speak, depending on what questions we might have. Mr. Rogers, to clarify, District 67 has approved ECRa, and Mr. Rogers spent a good deal of time working on the assessment report with ECRa. And I'm happy to report, for the first time in my tenure here, we had an assessment report that was met with sort of high fives all around in terms of how robust it was and how statistically sound it was as well, something that the 67 board has been really eager to see, and it went very, very well. So we are often encouraged to discuss things that are areas of growth at the high school, and we have a couple of those that I want to talk about tonight. The first is, we do not have specific data on student achievement and growth trajectories. We also have an area in our mission and vision work that is particularly challenging for us, and that is social and emotional growth. It's part of our district, one of our district milestones. So how do we define it? How do we measure it? And then if we can do those two things, how do we drive it? We do not have the capacity to do either of these things right now with our existing personnel. ECRa specializes in tackling tough problems just like these. Getting them onboard immediately helps us with our summer planning. We spent all summer gearing up for the following school year. They can also assist us in whatever data work might be necessary on another tough issue, which is including student achievement data into teacher evaluations. Whether the measures used for those are valid and reliable is really critically important. Finally, we can use them to assist us in this year's strategic planning work and then the implementation for the coming year. So with that, I recommend that the board approve that ECRa be approved in the amount of $33,000 for this fiscal year and $36,900 for next fiscal year.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the ECRa contract in the amount of $33,000 for fiscal year 16 and $36,900 for fiscal year 17.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion, any comments from board members as it relates to the proposed plan?
So, oh, good. So when we talked about the ECRa contract at the January board meeting, we had a number of questions about the contract and some things that we wanted to follow up on. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Simic and the district staff and our outside law firm for spending a lot of time on negotiating additional protections for our students in the contract. Having had the opportunity now to review it, I'm very satisfied in relation to the concerns that I had, which were not about the fact that I think that the ECRa service is a valuable one, but in terms of data confidentiality and security. Specifically, the improvements that have been made and were negotiated, and I have to say, it appears that ECRa was a very good negotiating partner and was very willing to accommodate us. The specific improvements are, first of all, there's an express recognition of District 155 sole ownership of our students' data. There's a prohibition on ECRa's use of our students' data for any purpose other than providing services to District 115. District 115 has full portability of all of the deliverables that we get and pay for from ECRa, so in the event that we are no longer working with them and we terminate the agreement, we still have the benefit of all the work that had been done for us. We got express representations, warranties, and indemnities relating to ECRa's actual data security practices. And then lastly, we've gotten ECRa's commitment to conducting practical and ongoing quality testing with relation to their data security practices, and they've agreed to cooperate with our district or our agents in reviewing and improving any management of our student data where we feel that there are any lapses. So with that, I'm very supportive. I think that this is truly a best-in-class set of representations and warranties, and I'm very confident that we're putting our data in a secure place.
Other comments?
I'd just like to add on. I have to admit, I kind of really struggled, you know, with this one because, well, first, you know, it wasn't brought to us with short notice. I'm glad we deferred it to this month from last month, and it did answer some of my questions. I do think this is a contract that really screams out for a shared services-type setup because I think I'd like to charge the administration going forward to get with 67 and District 65 and even St. Mary's, as well as the other private schools within our district, to see if, you know, there are, you know, scales that we can achieve at a much lower cost. So with that, I reluctantly am going to go along with it.
Yeah, quickly, I had some concerns similar to Ted's, and thanks to Dr. Holland's generosity, she invested more time than she probably cared to, but shy of an hour with me, and I have to admit, some of it I still don't understand, which is why the light bulb went off, because I think, as I shared with Dr. Holland, you know, I'm not here as the educational representative, so, you know, it's our ability to trust in the people that know that work and know what they need. And one thing that we are doing as a board is certainly forcing the appropriate measurement of our mission, vision, goals, and the milestones that we've put in place. And the thing I did hear loud and clear is, right now, we don't have a very good vehicle to do that, and this is going to assist us in that. So I reserve the right to be judgmental in the future, but at this point in time, certainly happy to support the request. So assuming there's no additional comments, Mr. Simic?
Yes, Mr. Powers, I'd like to comment. There's one thing that is really nice. Mr. Powers and I spoke earlier about this. One of the, this is one of the things that the board can approve, that the administration comes to you and says, this is something that we really need, and this is something as a board that you are going to have a very good window into, that you approve. There are many things that you may not, you can approve a parking lot, and maybe you one-time drive on that parking lot, or something in the building related to curriculum that you may or may not see. This is a very tangible deliverable for the board. There'll be ongoing presentations, no different than with 67, and you'll be able to see Dr. Gata or others come and speak directly to the value that this is adding to our district and our kids.
Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Okay, the next action item is very technical in nature and one that I'm sure will be popular for most, certainly in my household. Approval of additional late start dates. Those dates are March 16th, April 20th, and May 18th. Any background anybody can provide, or are we just throwing out late start dates now? What are we doing?
I can provide some information. So at the start of the school year, we looked at, as we planned for the late starts for the year, we considered some of the things that were out of our control last year in terms of the testing windows that the state approves late in the school year and the unknowns, which led to an increase in time used during our late starts and an increase of days for testing. And so rather than trying to name dates ahead of time, we left one specifically in March as a TBD, knowing that we would hope to have some information by that time. And so the March date is directly connected to something that's already been on the books as a to-be-determined. The additional two dates are being requested. In thinking about our focus on trying to be transparent and communicating out all of our updates regarding the school day internally and externally, our request is connected to that, as well as the need for more time to engage in some of our curriculum mapping work, our collaboration work. Considering where we are right now and the limitations in our schedule for the remainder of the school year, we definitely need more time for that. But I will say, as we've communicated out to everyone, we hope to revisit with all of our stakeholder groups an update and provide an update on our new school day in April. What one of the late starts did, or a couple of them, in addition to departments communicating out, the late starts allows us to get everyone together, all of our faculty and staff, for a joint meeting, while everyone is scheduled to be in the building to communicate the same message out. Currently, there's really no vehicle to do that, and while we don't intend to use the entire time for that, it's nice to be able to have an all-staff meeting around something so important for a portion of that time, and then allow departments to go back and continue to work around departmental collaboration.
I have a really profound question. Is this a 9:30 start or a 9:50 start? Wasn't specified in the.
It's a 9:30 start.
I think the 9:50 is just after our curriculum night.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the additional late start dates, March 16th, April 20th, and May 18th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion required? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next action item is the approval of Press Issue 90, which is a first reading. Those of you that have been monitoring these riveting changes mostly are policy-related. These are kind of rough draft. Mr. Simic, was that the best way to summarize it at this point? It hasn't been formalized yet, but will be at the next board meeting once the language is finalized. So with that being said, may I have a motion to approve Press Issue 90, first reading?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do think we have to call out that one of the Latin teacher who sent in his telling us he was retiring did quote from Ovid in Latin, which is awesome, and we really appreciate that.
That explains why I didn't pick up on it.
I would like to point out that Dr. Wilcox did not do that in her letter, but we, I recommend that we approve her letter of resignation effective June 30th, so she can become the new superintendent of Appticus Trip. I do so with regret.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have a consent agenda, which is approval of disbursements, payrolls, financial statements for January 2016, acknowledgement of the McMurren gift of art and reference books, another acknowledgement of Slacked gift of glass, minutes of a regular meeting January 11th, 2016, minutes of an executive session from January 11th, 2016, minutes of a joint board workshop of January 7th, 2016, disposal of audio recordings from July 1st, 2014. May I please have a second?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Can I raise an issue?
You certainly can.
One of the minutes, the joint board meeting on January 7th, I believe, has an error. There were two members of the public that participated. I don't know the names of both of them, so they should be, Nancy Thornton was one, and I didn't catch the name of the other person, so that should be added to that agenda or that minutes.
That is correct. And the other community resident was Gary Finley.
Is it best to amend that or pull that from the consent agenda and we'll include it next time?
I think that with the understanding that that will be added, we can approve it as presented with that addition.
Okay, perfect. Good pickup, Dr. Elliott, thank you.
And as long as we're going to add to it, I also want to add, I was going to come, but I missed it. My little sister Kami got married that night.
So you still missed it, then?
Yeah, I still missed it.
So you're still absent. So no change is necessary?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have several FOIA requests from Donald E. Davis, non-residents, Trey Cobb, non-resident, Nancy Thorne, resident, Debbie Dent, resident, and a pending FOIA from SmartProcure Commercial. We have several announcements as well. Tuesday, February 9th is the Jazz Festival at 7:00 PM at the RMA. Friday, February 12th, Institute Day, no school. Monday, February 15th, President's Day, no school. Wednesday, February 24th, Late Start Day, beginning at 9:30. The talent show performances, gosh, it's hard to believe it's come around so quickly, March 3rd, 4th, and 5th, which will also take place at the RMA. And then our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Monday, March 7th, and that'll be held here beginning at 6:30. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board meeting?
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Voice vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.